Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to reconvene the regular school committee meeting at 6:49 PM for January 12th, And the first order of business we have is, I'm going to ask Mr. Jack Stadman to please have everyone stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. The January 12th, 2022 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 or Verizon Channel 34 or on YouTube slash TuxburyTV.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, we'll move to our business. Before we do move on to our official business, I'd like to make an official update regarding our negotiation with both our TTA employee groups. First, I'd like to thank the TTA for agreeing to making all of the bargaining materials available to the public. This is very important to us up here so that all Tuxbury stakeholders can see all the information that has transpired in the course of negotiations for a successor agreement. I also want to reiterate to the community that this school committee and the district's bargaining team is fully committed to continue to bargain in good faith to a resolution for both groups. The school committee is not going to engage in bargaining through email, social media, media outlets, or our school committee meetings, nor are we going to engage in a he said, she said campaign with residents and stakeholders. Everyone on this school committee has 30,000 constituents in Tuxbury, and we have that in mind as we negotiate with all of our collective bargaining groups. In spite of what is being purported by some, the school committee, through its district bargaining team, has not, nor would it ever disrespect, any of our employees, union or otherwise, in negotiations or during the performance of their duties. Additionally, teachers are not working without a contract. All the current wage, terms, and conditions of their employment from their previous contract from September of 2018 through 8/31/21 remain in full force, in effect, and enumerated in Article 37 of the collective bargaining agreement. The district bargaining team has not walked away from the table. The district bargaining team has been negotiating in good faith since January of 2021, through June of 15th, eight sessions to be exact, with both groups. As of that date, the parties had scheduled a June 24th session. Unfortunately, the TTA could not attend. The district bargaining team offered to continue negotiations during the summer, but the next date which was made available by the TTA was the end of August 25th. The parties met on that date and twice in September. During September's negotiations, the TTA countered with approximately $1.3 million in new additional funds from our last proposal in June. And when we asked them to come back to us with something significantly less due to our financial constraints, the union then countered an increase, not a decrease, in additional new money. On October 15th, we presented an updated proposal that included approximately $300,000 in new additional money and asked that the Tuxbury Teachers Association bring that last and final offer to its membership for a ratification vote. Because we appear to be going in the wrong direction and not making progress, we asked the TTA to join us in filing a joint petition for mediation with the Department of Labor Relations because we felt that a professional, independent, third party would be beneficial to our end goal of agreeing to a successor agreement. The TTA unfortunately did not agree. On November 1st, the district filed for mediation, and we are currently negotiating with the assistance of a mediator and are in the process of actually scheduling our third mediation session to come in a few weeks. Finally, our October 15th proposal to the TTA includes a salary proposal in addition to other financial components and adjustments. The salary component is equitable in relation to the contracts offered and approved by other unionized town employees. We have supplemented the percent increase in exchange for our one ask that K-4 teachers and aides perform lunch and recess coverage similar to what is currently being done by all Grade 5-12 teachers and aides. We have been committed from the outset to a financial package that we will be able to fund while providing the services necessary to provide a quality education here in Tuxbury. For anyone who is interested in receiving more in-depth information regarding the contract negotiations, the documents will be posted on the district website by the end of this week. Thank you. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jack Stadman for our student representative report.
As always, thank you for having me back, and I hope you all enjoyed your winter break. The Team HS Drama Club is excited to bring their newest production of Forbidden Broadway. Cast and crew members have been working hard over the past few months to present this to you. In addition, recent auditions for Mamma Mia took place. The theater company hopes to bring that to you within the coming months. The Student Council is holding their weekly meetings on Thursday mornings. Their new task is getting ready for all their February Valentine's Day fundraiser. Look around the school for posters for more information. The morning update is still broadcasting live every morning. You can tune in on YouTube to get to the latest in-school updates. And the International Club recently released their newest fundraiser, which is the Blanket Drive. All members were given fabric to make blankets for mothers in need. And last but not least, our Tuxbury High School DECA team recently had their district competitions this morning. They're all anxiously waiting their results to see if they will make it to state. I wish them best of luck to everyone, and that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Seeing no presentations, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone in the crowd this evening that wishes to speak to anything on tonight's As always, could I please have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Emily Niles, 24 and 1/2 years old.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emily Niles, and I am a first-grade teacher at the Heat Room. Let me start off by saying that none of what I am about to say is a complaint. Anyone who knows me knows I absolutely love my job, care deeply for my students, appreciate the unendingly supportive parents I've had for over 10 years at the Heat Room, and truly admire my colleagues. This is simply an opportunity for me to be a voice for my elementary colleagues across town and to get you and others in the community to understand the facts of the daily life of an elementary teacher, specifically a first-grade classroom teacher. What a huge loss it would be for students and teachers if we not only have to take on multiple lunch and recess duties next year, but only get back 15 minutes of our PLC time. I am standing here doing what is essential for my students and advocating for the best education they can get from us. When our day officially starts at 8:15, we might have 15 minutes to take off our jackets, put our lunch in the refrigerator, open our computers, tabs, slides, et cetera, get out materials, change the date on the door, use the bathroom, which, by the way, has to be meticulously planned out. An emergency, forget it. Can't leave the kids, there's no time to hold it. Currently, elementary teachers have duty two to four times a week from 8:30 AM to 8:45. Those who don't still have students in their room at 8:30 because this year administration has eliminated outdoor morning recess across the board. Depending on how a teacher's schedule works, two mornings or afternoons could be taken up by extra healthy conferencing time, as well as one morning or afternoon with an hour of PLC time to the max. That typically doesn't leave any available mornings to get anything done. Our day technically ends at 3:15, which is filled with another five-day-a-week afternoon duty to be sure the kids are dismissed safely. And we all know the buses aren't there and all the students are not gone and picked up by 3:15. Somewhere in our day, we have a 45-minute prep while the students are at specials, and in the middle somewhere, we have a 25-minute lunch, which isn't really 25 minutes by the time we walk and take children to recess and lunch, and a 20-minute common planning time. Doing lunch and recess duties would make it so that we are never able to plan with our whole grade-level team, share something that went really well or really poorly in order to adjust instruction for the development of the students, collaborate with colleagues like the reading specialist or speech pathologist, or even the principal who comes in to CPT three times a month. Currently, we have an hour of PLC each week, but that time is rarely available for us to utilize for any of the above as it is set aside for other things. We need that 20-minute CPT block that was put purposely into our schedules by administration. Assistant Superintendent Reagan, in particular, has positively instilled upon us how that time with colleagues is vastly essential and beneficial to the students' education. With no transition time built into the schedule, we essentially have less than 45 minutes to plan and prep while students are at specials. By the time we walk them to their special, use the bathroom, check emails and/or call parents, there is less than 30 minutes to prep our phonics lesson, which is a brand-new curriculum, and our reading, writing, and math lessons that need to be differentiated appropriately for various levels of students. This could be anywhere from a child who doesn't know their letters and sounds yet to a child reading on a level L that's already ready for third grade. We also have a brand-new math curriculum this year, which has no core text, no student books, and no spoken sequence of daily lessons provided. To plan one math lesson right now easily takes an entire prep. Then we have science, social studies, and the newly-present, ever-important ESL lessons. I won't even jump into the amount of time that spent grading and inputting data into this spreadsheet, that new online program, this report card portal. We have new initiatives added, not replacing something else, but added to our plates on a weekly and monthly basis.
Mrs. Niles, could I ask you to wrap it up?
Yes.
Public comment is three minutes. Thank you. I have no problem giving you additional time in latitude, but...
I was speaking on behalf of a group, but I had ten minutes.
You did not identify that you were speaking on behalf. You didn't even identify you were part of a group, actually. You said you were Emily Niles, 40, 1/2 years old.
I did, and I said that I was being a voice for all elementary teachers across the district at the very beginning. Is that a way to continue?
What's that? Yes.
Thank you.
But I... Go ahead.
So what you're asking of us is to spend our time on duty one to four times a week opening meals and walking students to the bathroom instead of seeing a lot of collaborating, planning, and prepping lessons and materials that will vastly benefit our students in Tuxbury. Oh, and with no transition time built in, we would have to actually take away time on learning or our lunch in order to get the kids where they need to go and then get to our duty on time. I know for a fact that at the Heat Room, we appreciate, respect, and love our lunch mongers as they are an integral part of our community and day-to-day routine. Our machines simply would not run without them. They often leave their 20 to 45 minutes with our students, saying, "We don't know how you guys do it every day." Thank you, mongers, for keeping our students safe and appreciating us teachers. We are constantly told that we are the professionals and we know what's best for our students. So please, listen to us. Please reconsider what you're asking of us in order to benefit the education of Tuxbury students. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening. Please know that our doors are always open. Anytime you'd like to come and visit and see what we do for our students every day.
Thank you, Mrs. Niles. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close this portion of Citizens Forum and ask that the clerk put forward the approval of the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our monthly meeting minutes from Wednesday, December 8th, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second and a motion to approve the December 8th, 2021 regular school committee meeting minutes. All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the chair is going to abstain due to my December absence. That's a 4-0 vote. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian, and the payroll as well, please.
Sure. Okay. So I move the school department payroll for the period ending 12/9/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,429,414.91.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending December 9th, 2021 in the amount of $1,429,414.91. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. It's a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,449,141.05.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period December 23rd, 2021 in the amount of $1,449,141.01. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And the final payroll, please.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending January 6th, 2022 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending January 1st, 2022 in the amount of $1,407,1971.
Mr. Chair, sorry, that was January 6th.
January 6th. My bad.
That's okay.
The payroll period ending January 6th, 2022. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian, in the amount of $1,407,1971. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. I'd like to turn it over now to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, just a continuation of kind of where we've been for the past two years, an update on COVID and the impact it's had on the district. First, I want a big thank you to all of our students, our parents, all of our staff members across the district for the resiliency they show every day despite the changing aspects of this pandemic and the impact it has on everyone's daily life. People are really coming to school and being positive and doing the things that they need to do to ensure that our students are learning. So thank you to everyone involved in that. A special thank you to our school nurses who are working extensive hours at night on the weekends. They did really not get a Christmas vacation because they were working so diligently on contact tracing, on monitoring cases. They continue to come in every day with a smile, do the best they can, but the level of work with pool testing, contact tracing, all these aspects has certainly taken a toll on them. We've brought in some additional assets to help them out. It just isn't enough. We could hire, you know, 10 more nurses tomorrow, and it wouldn't be enough. But thank you to the nurses for their outstanding work on this piece. We continue as a district to look at the impact of this pandemic daily. We look at balancing out every day our mitigation strategies about the things we're trying to do, whether it's where we can increase spacing, how we can improve some cleaning protocols, and we're trying to balance that out as best we can with providing the best in-person possibilities for all our students. It's a difficult task. It's something we're looking at every day on ways we can improve. The state has come out with a significant level of new guidance, new elements, new support. But again, everyone's really trying to keep up with this ever-changing virus. Our number-one concern with the rate of positivity across the country, across the state, in the town, is being able to maintain appropriate staffing at each building so we can have in-person learning. It's been a challenge at a few of our buildings. Hats off to our administrators who've done a great job trying to balance out different pieces, but it's something we do have to monitor every day. Our current website tracker, when I left the office to come here today, was at 190, which is shocking until you realize we were almost 100 more than that yesterday. So again, many of these aspects continue to change. There is new isolation and quarantine guidelines out by DESE that lowers the mandated timeline from 10 days to five, with an additional five with a mask. We've had some elements and some guidance that we followed around lowering the pool sizes in the pool testing that we're doing down to two or three students. We could be in double-digit students where we had looked before, and if that pool came up positive, it required significant secondary testing to determine which was the positive case. Now with smaller pools, it's a little bit easier to make that determination, but it's quite work-intensive to conduct that many more pools. We continue to work with staff to look at what their vaccination status is. We've asked them to report that to us. The Sunday before we returned to school after vacation, we were contacted by DESE. We went down to Franklin, Massachusetts, and picked up at-home test kits free of charge from DESE, brought them back, held an event at the Center School on Sunday morning before we reopened. Over 225 staff members came to pick up take-home test kits, which was great. Again, the purpose of that from DESE was to make a determination of where you were at staffing from Monday, returning from vacation. We held an additional one Monday afternoon. Another 75 staff came by and picked up taken-home test kits. So there are pieces that continue to work. We also received a large shipment of KN95 masks from DESE specifically targeted for staff. We've picked that up and distributed that to buildings. So we'll continue to look at those pieces. Hats off to our athletics department. Our athletics trainer has... There's some more intensive checks on COVID in athletics, particularly returning to play, that's pretty intensive on the trainer to monitor, and hats off to our athletic staff who's doing that. And just a final note on that particular piece is just a reminder that the mask requirement by DESE has been extended until February 28th, 2022. So again, the aspects of this pandemic certainly have a significant impact on us. We're trying to do our best to capitalize on every opportunity for in-person learning for students and to focus on the student achievement. Secondary, a thank you to Chief Columbus and the Tuxbury Police Department for their support. We did have... There was a nationwide TikTok challenge that was put out a few weeks ago, and the police partnered with us to have some extra support during that day. Just remind all parents and staff to monitor inclement weather situations. We were remote for a while, then we came back to hybrid. And in the hybrid, if there was a snow day, DESE gave permission to be remote learning. That no longer exists, so we're back to where regular inclement weather days occur. If a no-school day is called, then it's a no-school day. And thank you to the town-wide PAC who met on Monday night and had some great feedback sessions with them. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
No questions?
Mrs. Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the note of COVID-19 increased counts in our schools, I just want to remind any parents or community members that are watching, the COVID dashboard does more than just count the new cases. There is plenty of information and updated FAQs, as well as that updated flow chart for isolation protocols. I know Superintendent Malone already said, hats off to our nurses. They do a wonderful job of informing every single parent of those protocols. We just remind parents that those documents are there should they have further questions, and the nurses' time may be strapped dealing with the COVID cases in the schools. On our website, which is still up on the board up here, we are still in need of subs. We highly, especially with our increased COVID cases, we are still looking for subs in the application processes listed on our Tuxbury Public School website. Access testing for our English learners is currently underway. This is a required test for our English language learners to address specific targets and accountability settings from the Department of Education. We are in good shape, but due to increased staff and student COVID absences, DESI has extended the timeline for access testing through Friday, March 4th. We feel very confident we'll complete our testing by March 4th. I thought you should know that. And then emergency licensure. So DESI, if you remember, allowed emergency educator licensures during the COVID pandemic. And based on recent feedback from districts and educators and the ongoing impact of the coronavirus, DESI is extending the validity of some emergency licenses through June of 2023. We had recently received notice that they would only be good through June of 2022. They're extending and automatically adjusting those expiration dates for most licenses. That will not be the case for some special educator and ESL licensure for all educators. So we're working with... We currently have approximately 10 emergency-licensed staff in multiple roles, not just in teaching. We are making them aware of this extension and then what the links are to DESI in order to apply for extensions for some of those special education ESL licenses. Again, you know, finding all of the staff we need during the pandemic has been challenging, so this emergency licensure piece, this extension, is very helpful to the district. Okay, the Center School relocation. You are aware that the Center School will be part of the new school construction project. We need to be exited from the Center School before April 1st of this school year. So Superintendent Malone, business manager Dave Libby, myself, Jason Stamp, our tech director and STEM director, have been having weekly meetings with the owner's project manager and the construction team on the new school. And these meetings ought to really plan out all the details of the move, the documentation, the packing, what we can take, what we need to scan, all of that. It's quite a task. The team's been very productive. In fact, over the Christmas or the December break, some of our central office staff have already relocated to the Center School, to the high school. That would be our food service department, our technicians of the tech department, and our math coaching team. They have already moved to the high school. We're planned to move to the Center Fire Station once the new fire station is complete and they receive their occupancy permit. their occupancy permit and move over to the new station. The departments scheduled to move over to the fire station are the business department, the student family support, superintendent-in-assistant superintendent office, HR, maintenance, and then everybody else that's left. We're hoping over the February break, the special education department will also take its new home or temporary home here at the high school. We will continue to communicate as groups move to the associated Tuxbury Public Schools community. We'll keep you updated on that process, as you imagine, and no pun intended. There are many, many, many moving pieces to this relocation. And once we know exactly where everyone will be, we will produce a new directory for everyone from the central office for the Tuxbury Public Schools community. So, I think it's important that we update you at each meeting as to where we are, that timeframe's coming up really fast, and there's really no way we're going to be able to move to that phase of dealing with that center school area and the road and parking within the school. I think we might. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Do you have any question?
No questions. Thank you.
I have just a few, Mrs. Regan.
Sure.
The 10 emergency licensure, are we offering things? Are we trying to help people get there, or what does that look like?
Sure. We've assisted all of those staff members if you will in obtaining that emergency licensure. There is, there are some unknowns as to how those special licenses, they have to prove, the way DESI puts it, is they'll have to apply and demonstrate subject matter knowledge in those respective fields. We're unclear as to what that looks like right now. We know there's no fee, but we do know for some licenses, they'll have to work with DESI on that.
All right. Maybe that was a bad question by me.
Okay.
Are those 10 people working towards a permanent licensure, I guess was my intended question.
Different for some. I can tell you right off the top of my head, I know of a couple that are already in the pipeline to complete their initial licensure, but they needed their emergency license to work for us now.
Okay.
Not all of them. And I know by, you know, thinking of specific roles,
Sure.
will be looking at a permanent license.
Okay.
There are some unknowns as well, and I'll tell you, we need to know a lot. And as an educator and administrator, you may be aware, there are other implications that we need to be aware of. We're unclear if this leads to professional licensure status. Three years on an emergency license. I don't want to make my opinion known, but it's unclear as to whether they would meet the criteria of professionally licensed in the district. So, there's a lot of unknowns still, but the good news is it helps us acquire licensed teachers to build the positions we need right now.
Okay. Thank you. And then obviously, just want to be ahead of the announcing to our families, whoever's moving,
Yes.
whoever ends up moving, that obviously is very important. Communication is always key, and more is better in this instance than less, in my opinion. So, thank you for your report. I'm not sure after Mr. Libby's budget if he has anything to add, but Mr. Libby, you have the floor.
One quick point I forgot to mention during our presentation that will be posted on the website tomorrow is the detailed account level, proposed budget to this point that I'd prior to the school committee on paper, and they probably are here at the meeting tonight. But I'll be posting that tomorrow morning to our website. And again, the proposal at this point, it's always in flux and always moving, but it will be locked down prior to the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, that will be posted on our website on the website, business and finance.
Questions? Great. Thank you. And that gets us to this evening's consent agenda, or the short agenda. Do any of my colleagues have any questions, comments, concerns with tonight's consent agenda?
No questions.
No questions.
Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, the elementary school building committee, and Mrs. Demos, please.
So, the elementary school building committee has, will be meeting again tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the town hall. We are currently still in the construction phase. We'll be having substantial completion still on the schedule for October 28th, end of October. The construction's moving forward with interior framing near completion, the drywall's being installed, the art and administration areas, the boilers are going in in mid-December. It really is coming together. It's exciting to watch. Having 80 to 100 workers out there every day just really kind of says a lot. You know, it's, we're in good shape, I think, and it's at that point where it's no longer just the meetings talking about it. You can kind of see it for yourself when you drive by all the completion milestones that we're hitting. So, it is exciting, and we meet again tomorrow at the town hall.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Moving on, the Tuxbury CPAC, Mr. Parsons?
I have no new updates at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. And the wellness, Mrs. Garabedian?
No updates, looking to our next meeting in March 23rd.
And the policy subcommittee, I did talk with Mr. Stadman this evening, and he will have an update at our next meeting. With no policy changes, proposals, or adoptions, that gets us to old business, and Mrs. Regan for our professional development teacher workshop, January 14.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. I'm going to follow up to the last school committee meeting. This is part two of DESI, SEAL's community. You know, this is the beginning here where we're using a new tool, measure of SEAL's needs. Staff will be looking at the data they collected on September 3rd, and making some decisions for school, or group, or grade level, and then individual students. I will tell you that through the snow day on January 7th, our high school edition, students self-report advisory block on Thursday, it will be happening tomorrow. So, the good news is all of our staff, people have that ability to dive into it, analyze it, and then make those what are called lows and lows, glowing strengths, areas of growth and needs. I hope to show you some global data at our next school committee meeting. I mean, by that is grade level, what were those lows and lows around now, but we need some time to dive into it and learn to implement the rest of the tool.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Any questions?
Questions?
Great. Seeing none, I think you have an update for us regarding the Tuxbury High School principal search as well?
This is information I'll only, no vote is required. I wanted to share with you our process thus far. We'll see there are two doctors in the path, one is to mandate an announcement communication, or people to apply for the position of community health principal, and the second is to summoning of our timeline and the schedule on process. This announcement has been posted to the ESEC website, as well as to our school website. Again, you can see that right up on the screen. But the announcement also informs people of the profile of the Tuxbury Public School, and really all sorts of programs and teams at the school. If you turn to the back side of that announcement, you'll see the information to apply contact information as well as the P. Anybody wishing to apply, so the biker and I'm saying, so the way to do is just review the timeline, and there are a lot of research and so forth. There's an announcement, December 3rd. We shared it with our faculty and we also shared our community needs survey, and that is so that all of the MHS stakeholders and the K3 stakeholders, families can give the needed information, which an ESEC will take and create a profile developed as limited for communication, defining criteria of what the stakeholders will be wanting. And just identifying some of those initial goals that we should focus on when we begin July 22nd. We'll also be posting a focus group with our leadership team here at the high school, the teachers, the athletic directors, and principals and so on, to give some feedback to NSEC on the program. You can see a chunk here dedicated to a screening committee. Of those multiple stakeholder groups, parents, students, staff, faculty, administrators, there will be a screening committee. That screening committee will have two trainings, one on screen applications, and then two, the interview training, interview and selection piece. And you can see they'll be meeting several times, looking at all of the applications, and then do first round interview of the candidates that they have chosen from that screening. And then we expect them around in February to present the second round candidates to the superintendent, superintendent, and a member of the school committee. And we'll look at those second round candidates, and we'll interview, reference check, and site visit if needed. Our ultimate goal is to identify the selected applicants in March. And then, obviously, again, as I said earlier, this successful Tuxbury Public High School principal would begin with us July 1st, 2022. Any questions on the timeline or the process?
Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Anything?
Brenda, have we decided what the, when we are looking at the screening committee selection, recruiting, and selecting members? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. When we're looking at the screening committee and recruiting and selecting members, have we discussed what stakeholders will be sitting on that? I wasn't hearing 100% what you said.
Yes. We should go to the path, the Tuxbury Public School path, and then Tuxbury Social Education path, and ask the, you know, police identify some paths that will serve on the screening committee. They, all of the stakeholder groups, by the way, need to let me know. I think that, I think I look long live tomorrow.
Okay.
Many of our already responded.
Okay.
Then we'll be meeting with the focus group of the department leads. And when I say department leads, I do not just mean academics. I mean custodial, secretary,
Perfect.
service, and
Okay.
then they will, we need to choose three department leads to serve from the faculty and staff. We don't have those yet.
Okay.
The high school principal, current, John Bernard, is working with student leadership group to identify the student. So, we should know that screening committee, I would say, by end next week.
Perfect.
The entire committee.
I like to hear that there's a student represented on there as well.
Yes. It really is not helpful when you have student voice.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Different lens to the process.
We should be screening next week because their training is scheduled for the end of January. So, we do have to know. It is a significant time commitment, so we thank everybody who has raised their hand and said, I'd like to serve in that way.
I appreciate the schedule, though, having this finished by March. It gives us a greater pool of candidates prior to the July 1 start date. So, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And moving on, on the new business, to the superintendent search update in process. For those that may not be aware, probably the most significant and important role as a school committee member here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is hiring a superintendent. Along those lines, I would like to extend my gratitude to my colleagues. I couldn't make the last meeting. It was important for us to have one of our field directors from the MASCE come in and speak to the process, not only so we have an understanding, but so the community has an understanding, so stakeholders have an understanding. And that was very important work. So, tonight, it is certainly my hope that we can have some open and frank discussion regarding how we go from here. I think Mr. Malone's done a good job. He'll have his due at the February meeting, but it's time for us as a committee to decide the actions that we're going to take to move this district forward, not only for the remainder of this school year, but for the long term. So, with that, I would like to open it up to my colleagues. I'm going to start with the vice chair, Mrs. Demos, to get the discussion underway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You know, having thought about this for some time now, I think that we have agreed as a committee that we should be moving forward with an interim position to fill the remainder of this school year. And I would, I would like to nominate and ask if Ms. Brenda Regan would be interested in fulfilling that for us for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Sure. Before we get to that, I just want to ask, do we have any further discussion? I just want to make sure everyone's okay with appointing an interim at this time. Mrs. Garabedian?
Yeah, thank you. It was really actually great to have Ms. Presser speak with us last month. She did answer a lot of questions for me. It also gave me the opportunity, I think, to dig in a little bit more on my own, realizing that, I think, the heavy lift of putting out a search for an interim superintendent, given the timing and things like that, I definitely came on my own conclusion that having somebody from internal would be a better fit for us as a district, because I think this is going to be a lot of work, even just looking at this timeline for the high school principal. I think we're going to be looking at a pretty robust schedule for superintendent search. So, I agree with an internal candidate. So, yes.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
I just want to echo the sentiments of my peers in nominating Brenda Regan as the interim superintendent. Obviously, there's a lot of change in district, and maintaining the basic integrity and function of our public schools during this time is of the utmost importance. And Ms. Regan is the most qualified, most experienced for taking on that responsibility.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I agree as well, and I'll accept your, as a second to Mrs. Demos's motion, because I am also in agreement. It's kind of simple for me. We have a superintendent and an assistant superintendent for a reason. If that person goes down, the assistant superintendent would automatically assume that role. I think it's going to be good for our kids. I think it's good for stability. And with that, I'd like to take it to a vote. So, the official motion is to, I'm sorry, can you reiterate, Mrs. Demos?
Oh, sorry. I was making a motion to appoint Ms. Brenda Regan as our interim superintendent for the remainder of the school year.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mrs. Brenda Regan to the position of superintendent of schools for the remainder of the school year. One discussion item I do think we need to clarify, I think we might want to just work along the lines of Mr. Malone's contract, the school year. I'm not sure where that ends. I think Mr. Malone, his contract expires on June 30.
June 30.
I would offer as an amendment, if it's okay with my colleagues, to appoint Superintendent Mrs. Regan to the position of superintendent for the remainder of the school year and the remainder of the contract, which expires on June 30th this year.
I agree with that.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to approve Mrs. Regan, the school superintendent for the remainder of the school year slash contract year currently held by Mr. Malone that expires on June 30th, 2022. Want to take this on a roll call vote. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. And then obviously, if you would like to do the honors of asking Mrs. Regan, it's your motion.
Mrs. Regan, I would be honored to be the one to ask if you would like to step up to the role of superintendent for now, or from when Chris leaves to June 30th of this year as our interim superintendent. We would be honored to have you.
I would be honored and proud to serve Tuxbury Public Schools in this new capacity for the remainder of the school year. Heartfelt yes and thankful. So thankful for your support. I'd love this community to know I will work tirelessly towards the achievement of our students and to support the whole team. We have the best students in the world and the greatest administration, faculty, staff, and families. So, thank you. Yes. Capitals full. Capitals full on the line. Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And just as a matter of making sure the public is aware, this is an interim basis only to the remainder of the year. I don't think I wouldn't be doing my job completely if I didn't ask you. If you are going to have intentions, if the committee chooses to do so, to formulate in a formal full search committee for a permanent superintendent, I was just inquiring as whether or not you would be interested in doing that, just so we know and so the public knows.
You know, I have interest in that, I do. That process hasn't been defined yet, so, but my interest, yes, I have interest. I think I'm still processing the very challenging, hard work we have for the next four months. So I think that right now is what's right at the front of my mind. There is a lot, you know, we have a lot of focus areas and priorities to talk about, a lot of them tonight. So I'm going to focus there first and then wait to hear what that process looks like. And yes, very much have interest in serving my community.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Additionally, so that's, my hope was honestly to take a couple steps tonight. Obviously, that's a big first step. Our next step, I would like to open up here in a second to my colleagues. I have talked in depth with Dorothy. I know Dorothy has been here and spoken publicly and even privately to some of you. Me personally, I think it's still important that we conduct a full search. I was around, not on the school committee, but I was around for the tail end of Mr. Malone's search. I think it's only responsible, although it's ultimately the school committee's decision. We want the public to know that this is a community decision. This is a very, very important decision and we don't want to make it in a vacuum. I think we want to make sure that we have input. I think if we can get help and guidance, which sounds like it's available by consulting groups. I have sat with the town manager. I've sat with Mr. Libby. I've sat with Mr. Malone. We have a commitment. They're more than willing to put money forth so we can get an RFP, so we can put it out. You know, a one-page soliciting, search firms. And then we can decide which firm that we think is going to best fit to get the best group of candidates in here. From that process, if that's what the committee so desires, then the real work will start. That real work will probably include additional meetings. It certainly will include stuff like stakeholder input. We'll have surveys, we'll have focus groups within the schools, outside the school. As I said earlier, this is a big decision for a lot of people and we'd be remiss in our duties if we didn't make sure that we weren't getting all of the input that we could in making those decisions. So with that little prelude, I'd like to open up this discussion and start with our vice chair, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you sitting down with Mr. Montori, Mr. Libby and getting that information started for us for the RFP, because to me, that's pivotal for this search. You know, we, we are kind of stuck where we are right now until we get that in place. And I do think that we're all on the same page as far as querying all varied stakeholders across the community. I think that it need, like, you're right, we do need to maybe put some more dates on the calendar and get this done sooner versus later. So I'm not sure how the RFP, RFP process will roll out if there's a time constraint, you know? So I look forward to hearing more about that.
Maybe we could ask, Mr. Libby, traditionally, how long would it take to generate an RFP, looking, if we so choose so, looking simply for a consulting firm, superintendent search consulting firm? And then how long would it, sorry, two-part question. I feel like I'm at the White House. I got one question, two parts. And then the second part is, how long would it have to be out there just so we can try to set our timeframe to be expeditious in our work?
Well, I've had a few things already. Probably laserized, take our own, work to do. And so I think getting the format down would be fairly quick, really quick process. Typically, it seems to be advertised for two weeks. And then it would leave maybe a week after that for folks to respond.
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm really specific. Two weeks is that? 10 days is that? 14 days is it? Outside holidays, whatnot is it?
Two calendar weeks.
Two calendar weeks, thank you. And then can you just explain a little of the process? How we would send that, you know, we, obviously, I think we have some groups that immediately come to mind, you know, maybe the MASC, the NESTAC, you know, where we already have some affiliations there. But can you just speak real briefly to where else it would go or who else would see it or who else could bid on it?
Yeah, there's some websites, public offices, the Tuxbury Service, that it's posted at. And it gets required about, I believe, on Wednesdays each week. And so that's kind of the, the start when the date starts to pop up. So and you can certainly target vendors you want to be involved and send it directly to other vendors as well.
Sure.
But the public, the vision has to be on that website for all to see. I don't believe the value of this service rises to the level where it would be advertised in a newspaper. From what I've gathered, this type of service is under the threshold for being advertised, requiring advertising in the newspaper. So it depends on services, what we need, where we need to advertise it, and we can send this to folks we feel would be appropriate in this.
Great, thank you. Moving back to.
Clarification.
Sure. Moving back to the discussion. Mrs. Garabedian?
No, I have no further questions. Do you, is this something we, you need a motion and a vote?
I would feel more comfortable if the committee's comfortable, they're making a motion to authorize Mr. Libby. Are you okay with that, Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Well, I have no problems then. Are you okay, Chair? How about I'll make the motion? I'll make the motion to authorize our business manager, Mr. Dave Libby, to work with our town to put an RFP together that will solicit people interested, firms that provide the services of consultation for the purpose of a superintendent search.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to authorize Mr. Libby to work with the town to put together an RFP for a superintendent search consulting firm. I'll take a roll call vote here. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Libby. And moving along as a process then. So that will leave us, hopefully, Mr. Libby can get with the town rather quickly. We certainly don't want to rush things, but we would certainly like to get it posted as soon as we can. The real work, I just want to caution everyone, the real work starts once we get a consulting firm. And all of the things that we have talked about earlier that are important to us, all the things that Dorothy Presser talked about as far as getting input, I call it, I call it the pillar. They had a fancy education word, but maybe, Chris, you could explain a little bit of the process of how we as a community will decide what we want to see as far as characteristics going to the superintendent. And then obviously, part of our search will include the current past goals that were made by the superintendent, will want to see reflected in whatever new superintendent that may come and have consideration in front of us. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe you could speak to that.
Sure. So once the RFP goes out, different agencies, groups will apply for that and they'll really try to impress upon the committee, the town, what they can offer in that superintendent selection process. And it's up to the committee and the town to determine what's going to be the best match for them. Certainly, a search committee or a search group consultant that's going to come in, they can prioritize looking and helping the community prioritize what their goals are, what are the characteristics they want to see in the next superintendent? How are those pieces going to layer in? How a group is going to help you gather that information from the community, structure a search now that will prioritize those goals and pieces, cast a wide net as far as stakeholder involvement, looking at those pieces. Ms. Regan talked about the principal search piece and the training involved for people who may be screening on a screening committee or an interview committee. It's pretty extensive in this process. And the interview process is actually typically designed by the consultant to be really structured and really come to an outcome that people are going to be happy with. So again, their, their ability to attract high-quality candidates, to advertise the position, help advertise that position, help highlight the great qualities of Tuxbury when that is advertised, to attract high-quality candidates. Talk to the committee and the community about salary ranges, other pieces that may make it attractive for someone to come in. And hopefully, an agency or a consultant that is really tapped into where we are as a state as far as superintendent overings, superintendent candidates, where they're coming from, how to best attract those, and to really help focus the community and the committee to really, you know, drive a great search. A good consultant is going to be as good as you can push them. So the idea would be to push them to really meet the needs of what the community's looking for. And typically, a good consulting firm will structure a pathway for that. Ms. Regan went down, you know, kind of a simpler timeline with the superintendent search. And I think Ms. Demos kind of referenced this. You should see a fairly concrete, intensive pathway to get to that piece to where you're hiring a superintendent at the end of that process.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Any other questions or discussions?
No, not this time.
Do you have anything else, Mrs. Demos?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we're going to move on to school committee matters of interest and I'll start when I left with Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate all the students that we had in today that we were honoring again. They should all be so proud. These nights like this are ones that really kind of make all this hard work, you know, worth it when you get to see them in here and really kind of thriving. I did want to just take a quick minute. I've been receiving some calls and some emails regarding the upcoming election and I just want to let all of you know now and tonight that I have decided that I am not going to be seeking reelection. These past three years have been unprecedented, to say the least. When I ran for this seat, I was an assistant principal and had some students here at the high school. I had, you know, wanted to share my various lenses of expertise with the community, but who would have thought that I spent the majority of these three years navigating through a global pandemic? And now at this point, I feel as though that I have given it my all. I've made, please know that all my decisions have had the safety and the best interest of the students and staff of our district at the forefront while simultaneously being cognizant of the budgetary implications of my decisions. I want to thank you all for this opportunity and I wish my successor all the best.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Garabedian?
For matters of interest, I have two things to mention. Yesterday, I attended the Ryan Wynn Band Concert directed by Mr. Olavsky. It was phenomenal. I've listened to a lot of Hutcrust buns in my time and this was by far the best. So I, I really, really enjoyed the program. They're meeting again tomorrow night with the second half of the students. I think there's just been a phenomenal interest in the band at the Ryan this year. So my thanks to everybody that put that together. The next thing I'd like to mention is we, Mr., the chairperson and I had an opportunity to sit down with one of the Tuxbury representatives from the Shawshank Tech this week and to chat a little bit about problem solving, how to get some more information out to the community regarding the opportunities that they have over at the tech. So I'd like to thank Cheryl Bartoloni for sitting with us and reaching out to us on that behalf. So we look forward to, you know, continuing that relationship and maybe when life is a little bit more back to normal, reevaluating some of those options.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mr. Parsons?
I have no resident interest at this point. I do just want to extend a thanks to all stakeholders. I'll be direct in saying this, this winter is difficult in schools for everybody. So I would just want to urge the entire community and schools, take it day by day, take T-Preps and do our best to work with each other to get through it. Yes, it's hard. There's no candy coating it and there's no easy solution. Just need to get through it in as many whole pieces as we can. But thanks to everybody, family, students, staff, everybody.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. And I'm just going to piggyback on Mrs. Garabedian. I'd also like to thank our superintendent and officer Ware for working with the Shawshank Tech, which I believe we're unaware of, certainly something we were more than happy to make sure. I'm a Tuxbury guy, went to Tuxbury High School, went up to Tuxbury through and through and not all education settings are for everyone. So happy to make sure that those kids this year have the opportunity to see that there's other options out there for them. So Chris, thank you very much for making that staff available to help assist in that process and Cheryl as well. Additionally, I would like to personally thank Mrs. Demos. So many people say a lot, but you did a lot, you know? It's a, it's a big thing to put your name out there and to, and to take the shots and there's no glory in this job, believe me. For those of you that are running, there's no glory. There's no, so I can't thank you enough for your time and your dedication. You've always been an honest, thoughtful member of this community. You've always put the kids in the district first and I'm surely going to miss you, so.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
It means a lot.
All right. With that, our future subcommittee meeting dates are February 9th and also March 9th with one caveat, we, before up and run, we may have an additional special meeting for the purpose of advancing the superintendent search. So if we do do that, as we do with any special meeting, Mrs. Regan, can we please make sure, I know Mr. Malone has done this in the past, specifically like with the reopening of my part, if we do have a special meeting, we will make sure that we message out to all of our family members and stakeholders, put it on the website, but I just want it to be in the back of people's minds, so. And the subcommittee dates are listed. Elementary school is tomorrow, CPAC January 20, Wellness Advisory March 23rd, and to be determined for the policy. Do one of my colleagues have any future agenda items?
None at this time.
Nope. Not at this time.
Okay. And I don't have any at all. Once again, I would like to thank you on behalf of the committee for either attending this evening or watching at home. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mrs. Demos.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I've a motion to the second to adjourn. All those, and three, that's like the five I say. All those, and that's signified by saying that.
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Well, thank you.